Something coming through? We're gonna make a beginning. We'll start with prayer, followed by the pledge.
Father God, we bow and we thank you for a nice weekend. We're thankful for protection. Be with those that are suffering illness. Care and heal. Lord be your will. We pray and thank you for the country we live in. And know there's chaos around the world. We pray for wisdom and direction. Even the local, we pray for direction and wisdom. Pray for those that protect us. Those that were bad and immune. Keep them safe and they will continue to live in peace. So I do this prayer with my best.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business are the minutes. Is there any chance to review those? And if so, if there are no moves, adds or changes, you accept a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
One second.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Three, zero. We had payroll totaling $257,571.91 and claims totaling $445,042. I accept a motion to approve.
Accept a motion.
On favor, I.
Aye.
Is someone here with the Sheriff's Department today? I got his notes.
You got it?
Yep. As of today, there's 32 pretrial Superior, 25 pretrial Circuit, 12 certi sentences, eight F six, six DLC, and one DLC here for quarter only for total of 84. Okay, Sean? He's engineering the door. Engineers be engineering the door.
We've been working on the gravel roads here for the last couple of weeks. We're planning on finishing them up this week. Next week, we're gonna be having several crews out on the roads patching and replacing drainage pipes. I want to make everybody aware to be careful because we will be walking on the roads. Slow down for us, please. We start taking dust control applications today, and that will go through April 29th. You can come to the Highway Department between 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. to pay for it, or you can mail it in. The cost is $1.57 a foot this year. You can also find it on the application on wellscounty.org. And we have mailed postcards to any previous customers. Is there any questions?
I had a couple of phone calls on how do we get a gravel road converted over to triptych, and I know you were just talking about that a little bit ago. Do you want to touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, we started with a petition from the neighbor. So we'll have to take every property owner, including field owners, within a mile stretch. Once we get a petition in, then we'll mail out right-of-way forms. They have to submit, they have to relinquish right-of-way to us so we can widen the road, create new ditch lines. And after we get all the right-of-way, we stick them on a list, and it's first-come, first-served basis.
Okay. How big is your list?
I'm sorry?
How big is your list?
We're a couple of years out right now, but I'm in place of trying to change our process with how fast we can do it. In the past, it's taken us a couple of years. If I can get to the right point, I think that we can complete a couple of miles per year and finish it the year we start instead of waiting two years to finish it. So if I can get that process moving a little bit quicker here in the future, then we ought to be able to do more if we get more right-of-way.
And it takes an unanimous decision from the property owners on there to get that.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. That's everything I've got.
Thanks. We got an update with Connor on the Highway Garage. I'll let him talk.
Thank you.
Morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
How are you guys?
Not too bad.
Good. A quick update. Really, the show this week is going to be tomorrow night at 7:00. We're doing the presentation console. I have asked that you guys are available for a pre-meeting just to button up anything that you need to before going into, and also just so you're fully aware of what we're presenting ahead of time. That's tomorrow at 3:00 or at 2:30. And we have gone ahead and ordered the pre-anchoring metal building for the project. That's it.
Great. 2:30 tomorrow?
2:30 tomorrow.
Okay, I had done four, so thank you.
Okay, we end up four.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Apologies. Thought I had turned it off.
Mic's one? Can't hear us with that?
Hold your mic closer.
No, it's all right now.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, here's the... Caught ya. We got it here now? Yes, please. Good, Jeff. Mr. Swan, how are you?
I'm good.
Good. So with the county garage, we've actually taken on a person that's advocate for the county to just double-check. We want to make sure this project comes in well under what was budgeted as far as the funds allocated by the county council. So we're watching every spin. We're going through, make sure that we're getting the right bids out way ahead of what's typical here, and then have a full review of somebody that doesn't have a dog in the fight, basically, somebody that can step back neutral and say, this is your best decision, this is your worst decision. So Mr. Swan is part of a company called Cuban Company. They do projects for Purdue University, City of Lafayette. Mike can probably give you more detail, but bring Mike on to be that me. Myself and the other commissioners don't have time to be involved in that 24/7, but Mike will review everything that comes through from Jacksons and the subs to make sure this project runs seamlessly. So we're excited to see this project get done. Thanks for helping us out, Mike.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your kind.
Nate?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hey.
Couple of different items here. First item is the federal aid for fiscal year 2027. I have a early coordination meeting scheduled end due on April 14th to review the request for proposals. So that'll be us just essentially entertaining consulting contracts from engineering firms to look at these two of the County Road 200 South. And that's from Hoosier Highway, Clark Street intersection, east of State Road 1. So that's what that project will be. So just waiting for that meeting within that. That was the earliest meeting they've given me, so just before our good Friday. Bridge 121, this is 600 East over the Eight Mile Ditch. Concrete approaches reported last Tuesday and Wednesday last week. Formwork is being removed and some of the fast work underneath the bridge as well. We're certainly on schedule for asphalt plan paving. Hopefully, asphalt plans will be opening up as early as next week, so that project should be ready for paving as soon as we can get asphalt pavers to show up on that project. So once that's done, then I'll go in. So we'll probably get about two more weeks, two to three more weeks. Weather dependent, and obviously, this week's weather isn't really cooperating, so that may actually push us back a little bit from what we're hoping for. So that's gonna be update on that project. I'm definitely looking forward to getting that road opened up. Murray Stormwater Project. Materials are arriving there in Murray. I think actually all the pipe and most of the structures are already there. They were to break around today and anticipate about a 10-week construction project. That's a big T F job. Fortunately, obviously, with the rain this week, they probably may even punt all the way till next week to start. Next item I have here is Bridge 65. This is a bridge carrying Jeff Road over a branch, the Salomone River. I'm asking for your consideration of engineering design services on that bridge. It's a project I'm looking at for calendar year 2024. Bridge has been posted at 24 tons now. It's not, probably wouldn't be something I would consider for a federal aid project. It's really not that big of a project overall. But because of the gas line proximity to it and right-of-way acquisition, it's not a real simple job either. So there's only one property owner that owns all the ground. I've actually met with him. We were looking at right-of-way and the gas lines, and he brought a few concerns up, which made me change how I want to approach this project a little bit. I'm asking for your consideration not to exceed fee to Butler Fairman Cipher of $104,520. It's quite a bit more than what we've seen recently for consulting services on these projects, I understand. But I didn't want to have them bring a full contract if you're not interested in moving forward on that project or at that sort of fee. I think there's some money we're gonna be able to save on survey costs. I've asked them to look at a couple of other surveyors to try to bring that number down from what they had originally proposed for me on that.
Is that the only bid we have? Can we get another bid from somebody else?
I can get some other quotes on that. Unfortunately, some of the numbers quoting consulting services usually scares consultants off. There's so much work out there to be had for the design firms. Usually, I've gotta coax them to look at these projects and put numbers together.
I know the bridge. I went back in the file and I got the email last night from my 2012 book, and it was fair back then, so...
Needs to be worked on.
It needs attention. Timeframe 2024 probably would be okay, 2025?
Yeah, 24 would probably be the earliest that we would put in for even grant application. So probably, construction-wise, if we apply for funding in 24, it'd be fall '24, possibly '25 before anything would happen with that.
I don't have a problem fixing the bridge. My bigger issue is that we get one quote. I wouldn't get one quote for my house, so I'm not sure why we'd get just one quote. So I would like to see you get some more numbers on it before we just approve $104,000, especially if you think that's up. Just keep everybody's pencils sharp. All right.
I can do that. I'll bring it back next meeting. Item five, Bridge 403, working on utility relocations. I've got a meeting. I was supposed to have a meeting Tuesday morning, but it sounds like the utility company has got somebody with COVID, so we pushed that out a week already. Once I get that done, we get the utility relocation completed, and then I can finalize the date with Judy for starting that work. So just kind of a quick update on that one. It will be a 2022 project, so their construction contract requires them to be done before November of this year. Bridge 402, this one's out on County Road 500 West. I need to request approval of a supplemental agreement on that project. The foundation type, based on the geotech report, actually is not gonna work. The rock is actually too shallow for pilings to be functional, so I've gotta do a more elaborate foundation design through USI. And the other, probably the more pressing issue is just the right-of-way requests have been rebuffed by the property owners in that area. One of the property owners, I've requested or reached out to the property owners adjacent to the structure. I've received no feedback back on two different letters to the property owners there. The one that I did, actually had a phone call with. The comment back was, I don't want the bridge to be closed when you're doing the two federal aid projects that are adjacent to her. Those are, she's near Bridge 106 and 105. I tried to explain that really the right-of-way isn't gonna stop us or start us from doing that work. I won't close the bridge, so there's no way to get to your house. I tried to explain that, but that fell on deaf ears. So I'm gonna have to probably prepare a supplemental right-of-way package and get appraisals done for that using the standard system, and then we can pursue the right-of-way at that time. So right now, right-of-way is really holding up that project going anywhere. The total supplemental agreement from USI was an additional $22,100. Probably about 70% of that is right-of-way appraisals, survey work that needs to be done, and parcel preparation.
I'll make a motion to approve that, get that bridge going.
I'll second that.
On favor, aye.
Aye. Three, zero.
On the local road safety plan, I know it was listed in the agenda that I have Jerry Faust here. Jerry isn't available this week, but he will be here for your April 18th meeting. I'll have him present some of the data that goes behind the local road safety plan. I know he presented the draft for that. That's on the website currently for a public review and comment. As of now, I haven't received any comments from the public on that to the County Highway Department, but that's certainly available for us. But I'm gonna have him present that information at your next meeting. Utility permits I have here for TGG equipment. It's actually a media com service, but it's just a service drop. So I actually scratched that from your notes. That's something that we do administratively. So I put that on my notes here, thinking it was an extension. It is not. And the last thing I have is any right-of-way dedications for... You've got a few of those. So those are some minor subdivisions and the like that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Seconded. On favor, aye. Unless...
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to Mr. Swain. I would like to make a motion that he is technically hired for the project.
I'll second that.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. All right, Oscean Interlocal. You ready to discuss that?
Just an update on that. There's some minor points that we're going through. Jeff and I have been talking about that. I should be talking to Chad Klein later on today, and I've been in contact with their attorney. It's still in process. I still do not have a full executed agreement between the town of Oscean and the developer, Mike Harper, who's their, Oscean's lawyer, had indicated that they're still getting things together. So I hate to do it, but I think, once again, if we could just table that till next meeting, hopefully by then, we'll have everything formalized and ready for execution.
All right, we'll table that then till the April 18th meeting. Thank you. More on the Pita Boa. Is there a news update on that?
I sent a letter to Mr. McChesney. The commissioners had some concern about him. I pursued to our ordinance that we just passed last meeting. He's allowed seven days' notice, written notice. I sent a certified and regular mail letter to him. I did not get that receipt back, so I cannot show you that he got notice that we had a meeting today. So I would just like to end with a local request that might be tabled until next session.
We'll table it until April 18th meeting. Monthly reports.
I have the meeting times for the commissioners.
So that's me. We had a lot of feedback and still regularly, not as much as I did at the beginning, but regularly get feedback that we're not accessible. We're the only group that doesn't meet after hours toward the public. Well, not the only one. The Health Department comes up quite a bit too, meeting at 6:30, but we're the second one that meets early in the morning. At least my constituents would like to see that moved. So I'd like to propose that we meet on Mondays starting at 5:00 p.m.
I guess my only concern, now that I know exact time, to schedule the drainage ward to coincide, let's say at 4:00, 4:30, I just need to make sure Jared and Nate will be available now that I know the time you're looking at. So can we have that discussed? And then brought back at the April 18th meeting to verify that Jared and the drainage ward and Diana will be available?
Yeah, I make their salaries, so you say they gotta be here, but that's... Yeah, that's fine.
Right, I just, I'm not sure if there'll be a conflict. I just want to make sure.
Yep. That's fine. And then we discussed, or was there discussion about how some of those people, if they couldn't be there, if it was really a life-changing event for them, was their ability to, for them to zoom in or have that electronically? Or sub. We have somebody sub.
As long as we advertise it in advance to make sure it's implied.
Those department heads?
Everybody, yeah.
Look at that. I mean, it's something that happens already. The county council and all those guys are there. I think Nate and those guys show up to that. But could we approve it based off, not have to wait till the next meeting? Approve it based off Nate and...
Are we talking about both meetings? Or are we talking only about one of the two meetings in a month? Because then we have to deal with the solid waste, and that's got seven different guys.
That's a good question.
So, I mean, if we want to do it, maybe the first Monday of the month in an afternoon-evening meeting, and then the second one remain as is. But I just got a lot of things in motion that need to be...
So we'll work those details out and vote on it on next meeting.
Okay.
So we're gonna let it sit for now, just to be clear. All right. Okay.
There was an event permit for the Washington Commons. It's been approved by the mayor. Just needs to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. It's for a shred event on May 7, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to noon on the Commons parking lot.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. On favor, aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
That's everything I have.
Anything else up here? Audience?
Would like to speak.
Please.
I prefer not to go up here and borrow my seat.
Yeah, you're front of your seat. I can hear you just go. I had to come up here that way. We got you on the, she's got you on the speaker. Yeah, can you pick him up though if he's... Okay, let's get him over there and up here.
I'm nervous about the way I am. I'm not a public speaker on the farm. So please be patient.
We got it.
I gave you all three a packet about what I was going to speak about. My goal is not to come and blindside anybody here today. My goal is just to talk about the facts. My name is Courtney Pfister. My wife is Jody Pfister. We bought the Fahout Farm May of last year of 2021. My family has farmed this farm as long as I can remember. We do try to carry the torch for the Houck family. I spoke with them, and they are 100% behind me as I speak today. One thing I want to do is today, I just want to talk about the facts, what transpired. I don't want to, you know, talk about sentiment or feelings. Let's just talk about the facts. So I have about 10 things I'd like to go through here. The first thing I'd like to talk about is a late notification to the Houck family by the Butler Company. I know Butler has a longer name, but I'll probably reference to them as the Butler Company. And my understanding is there was a grant applied for and received. Soil samples were done, and some of the surveying was done before the Houck family even knew anything about it. That doesn't sound right to me. Following up on that, since I purchased the farm, I have not received anything through the US mail from anyone concerning what's gonna happen to my farm. Nothing. I did receive an email from Nate late February about the meeting at the library in March, but I have not received any formal notifications in the mail. I will tell you that our family is not against progress. An example is we are working with the Hoosier Highway project going from the intersection of 300 South and Hoosier Highway direct into, is that Adam Street? Sorry, I don't know.
Yeah.
And so that takes the semi-traffic from there to the ethanol plant, Patons, other industries. That project makes sense. The County Home Road extension does not make sense. So we are giving up almost half a mile of farm ground for the Hoosier Highway project. My family is, which I own a small part. And so we aren't against progress, but I don't think the project for the County Home extension is a good project. Point five. I was in Nate's office approximately two years ago. We were talking about the Hoosier Highway project, and he, I know how it came up. We started to talk about some type of a south corridor project. So he showed me paper he had going from the intersection of 300 South and Hoosier Highway, going south on 300 to County Home Road, turn left. County Home Road tees into 200 right there by Shaw Gravel Pit, across the Fahout Farm. I looked at that, and I thought, you know what? That's got possibilities. That's, I mean, a south corridor? Yeah, that looks, so that looks pretty decent. You know, it has potential. Whenever the Hoosier Highway project was negotiated, it was negotiated that the railroad on 300 South would be closed. So to me, that shut down that whole south corridor idea. I thought the road going across the Fahout Farm would not happen. Now, I will have to tell you, in the last 12 months, I have received a really good education about how all this works. Before that, I didn't know how all this works. And I have to admit, as I found the facts, I'm not super happy with the process of the notification of the landowners after the fact, after things have been decided, after grants have been brought in. I don't like it. Number six, as I look at this group, and thanks a lot for coming and supporting today. I appreciate it. But as I talk to this group behind me and other people, not one person has told me this is a really good idea. No one in the neighborhood wants the project. It's a small problem of a curve in a corner, and to bring in and waste valuable farm ground, putting a road right through the middle of a farm is not a good solution. It was a poor project to start with. Grants were brought in. That somehow made it a good project. Landowners were not notified. It still is a poor project. And I think it needs to be shut down, if possible. Number seven, I already covered. Number eight, we're taking valuable farm ground out of service. If I have a building that falls down or burns, I can go build another one. I can't go build more land. There's only so much ground in Wells County. There's only so much ground in Wells County. And so we, we're taking 18, approximately 15 to 20 acres out of service for a road that doesn't need to be there. On a side note, it does take future profit away from my sons and my grandsons. I mean, you can, you can pay me for this ground that I bought, but you're probably not going to pay me for the profit that comes off that ground the next 20, 30, 40 years. The last thing I would like to talk about is, this is the notification that was sent for the March meeting, okay? I received no notification in the mail from the Butler Company. They sent a letter to, there's two sisters for the Hauk family. They sent a notification to one of the sisters in the other sister's address. This is an example of their notification of the landowners. So I just wanted to present the facts today. As of today, my family and I, my wife and I, we bought this ground to farm it, and we plan to farm it. Now, can, can we change our mind? Yes. It's not set in stone. But as of today, we have no interest in selling this ground to anyone for a road project. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. We, we live in an awesome country, where we can, we can civilly, we can sit in the room, we can discuss things, and so thank you very much for your time.
Hey Courtney, I got one question for you.
Yes.
When I talked to you, you just stated that you want it to be shut down, no road at all, but when I talked to you, you had a second solution.
Yes, I should clarify. That's a really good point. I am not in favor of this project the way it is currently designed. In my mind, up until March meeting, there were options on the table. If you look in the newspaper article in 2020 of November, Nate says there's options on the table. In November, there were options on the table. First part of March, they came and said, "All options are off the table except this one," and that's taking the road right down the middle. And so in light of that, that's why I'm voicing my opposition today to that project, to that single project. I would still entertain, if they want to fix the corner, I'm happy to give up the ground to do that.
You had another option, though, that you had shown me, that's not fix the corner, so is there, are you saying there's options open, or there's the one option to fix the corner?
The other option that I, that I offered is to go straight north over 200 South, go down, make a curve, and go straight east out to the road, staying 100% on my ground. And I would gladly give up the ground to do that. But they said something about that T-road coming in being a liability. I guess I'm, I'll let them speak for, for that. I can't speak to that.
But I just want to clarify there are options.
Could I see that, that letter you got, the notification envelope, please?
Sure. I think we have a copy of that works, maybe?
I can, I can make it.
I can take a picture of it right now.
So that's the outside of the letter, and then this is obviously the legal notice that came along with it, saying that there was a meeting. And then that was the letter that was inside.
Is there a copy of yours in there, Lisa?
I don't know. It said to unplug it and hold it back.
If not, we got pictures I can send them to. Maybe hold on just for a minute until we see if this is working.
Sure.
Or use that, or she might go fire it up.
I can try.
Yeah.
Courtney, I'm assuming the little guy behind you is second-generation farmer?
This is, this is our son Spencer.
He makes you look small.
Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
She's got reports. Wait till Lisa returns them.
Sir, are you open?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. May I just come forward?
You may.
Okay.
I'm Bob Park. I live in Lancaster Township, and I just want to address a few things as far as helping communicate with people in the community, from your side to us. I'm sure you are aware of the 2035 Vision projects that are out there for the community for Wells County.
They're taking feedback, I guess.
Yes, and I know part of it was four-laning Highway 1, 2, 224, making a bypass around Ossien, and also a Pokabashi Trail. I don't know how many people are aware of all this, or the property owners are aware of this. And I think before it gets too far down the road, it needs to be communicated to them personally. And I know you say, oh, it's on Facebook, you read the paper, but there's so many people don't get the paper, and me, I'm not a Facebook person, so I rely on the paper. But I was thinking that somehow you need to communicate with the people, the landowners, because there are people building houses that may not know what's going to go on in the next 10 years. And is the planning commission and the boards in this county communicating with them to let them know, hey, this will affect your property where you're building? Because I know Norwell Road is going to be extended out to the east and west, 70 feet from the center line to the east, and 40 feet to the west, and that will accommodate the Pokabashi Trail that goes down Highway 1, crossed Lancaster Center Road, down Funeral Road, down to Norwell, then back up, I believe, to 224, and start with one.
Is there, I don't, I'm on the Trails Committee, but I was told that the trail is going back to State Road 1.
The west, the west stretch from 300 north to Murray, to Norwell, and Norwell back to Kingsland is one of the alternate routes. Now, I don't know with the right-of-way, that's, I think when they did a federally project on Norwell Road from Murray north to 9, I mean, 950 north, they did not acquire additional right-of-way, because I think it's, it says 40 foot, so 20 foot each way. So that would, that would increase that somewhat. Now, I don't know the 70 foot one way.
That's what it is on the site. It says to the right 70 foot from center line to the east on Norwell.
On the 2035 Vision project, has it?
Yes, yes.
All right, well, I won't, I won't disagree, but that's probably just their planning standpoint, but that would probably accommodate road improvements beyond just the trail. And it would assume that the trail is a separate entity than just being a winding shoulder. So that's one of the alternates that we've discussed, but I know that the priority has been to figure out where, where the trail makes the most sense as far as where, where it goes with a State Road 1 project. So we don't want necessarily pedestrians right adjacent to higher speed traffic.
There's a lot of stuff, but appreciate you bringing that to our time.
Yeah, because I know, I know, you know, widening Highway 1 is, it affects so many houses there, going up to where the new Lancaster park is, and all the businesses too. And, you know, people, people that are not aware of this are going to get a shock if we're not addressing it now.
Everybody should pay attention to that study and participate and give feedback to it.
Well, like I say, I'm, just like the gentleman before, I'm not against progress, but we need to really be aware of what's going on, so we can, as property owners, know what we're doing.
Right. Well, anytime there's anybody, call us, give information, at least, if we know, we'll find out.
To address it too, as far as Highway 1, four-lanings, and then the bypass around Ossien, you know, they say, well, Ossien is a growing area, but you know, I also understand IU Medical might be building out by Lafayette Center.
That is happening.
And that could be a different corridor that we need to approach as far as on that section of the county, in the northwest corner. And that would be an artery that need to open up to relieve, maybe someone could just in on Highway 1, and we don't need all that bypass if we have a good corridor on the west side. So there's just options out there, because I know even with this Norwell Road project and the, and the bypass of Ossien, this could affect people 450 east and on east of that area. And there's a lot of farmers who'd be affected by that, taking the land there. Do they know about it yet?
Yeah. I don't know when we started. There's a study with, I can't remember when that study was. Three or four years ago, maybe?
2020 is what I've seen of the study.
Probably the date when the study was completed, was 2020, and so it's been discussed publicly multiple times, and I know it was part of their Vision 2030 when they did that, so then they added that as part of their study, and then COVID, they added the five years to that. So it's been, it's been a discussion for years, and because it's State Road 1, it's not something that the county can directly.
We, we can say what we would like, and what we think we need, but when it comes to dollars, it's got to be a total participation.
Yes, how much, how much is depending upon the federal government, the state government, how much control do we have in this county, or that?
Right.
You know, I hope we have more control in all local areas.
Yeah.
Very good. Well, do you have my contact information?
Pardon me?
Do you have my contact information?
I got a lot of stuff here. I got, I got, it says here, "There when you need it, the county government." So I thought it just ran along. These are good little pamphlets. I wish everyone could see a little bit of this and see what our government has set up. So I'm glad you do stuff like this, and I've noticed too, you got a 2022 Wells County packbook. It's got information in it that people can read about what's going on in the county. You also got the Wells County Indiana Chamber of Commerce Economic Development booklet comes out. There's stuff in that with knowing about what's going on in the county.
You bet.
So.
Well, if you have some other ideas, if you have some other ideas, I'd like to discuss them too in the future.
Well, what I'd like to see is on these people that are affected, personally, I'd like to see, even if it's postcards sent out to these property owners, what's going on. And I know I brought this up in a different planning meeting with another group, that they said, "Well, people get this mail, they just toss it and see it's from the government." Well, if you send them a postcard, put it in red letters, "This affects you and your property," maybe they'll read it. So make it direct. And I thank you guys, and I appreciate your service, and I think you appreciate communication with the people. That's where we keep things friendly and open and moving ahead. So thank you very much for listening.
And I do believe we have a roundtable discussing some of these issues with the bypass, the potential bypass and State Road 1 expansion on April 28th. So if you'll get ahold of me, I'll give you that.
Okay.
More of that information than I have. I don't know if that's set in stone yet or not.
And do you know too, if all these, I assume, these communities like Ossien have representatives that already know about all this, don't they?
Some.
Okay, well, I think we need them all to know about it.
Right.
I think they all know about it.
Yeah.
In both.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa, anything else? Good? Okay. Well, that'll accept much.
Seconded.
David?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.